Good evening. The July 21, 2022 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. Delapetro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treebosser.
Here.
And Mr. Molnar.
Here. Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date time in place there posted as follows: on January 11, 2022, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Minnesota Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board wants go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of the meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The Board will now go into closed session. Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
So, motion? Second.
Motion by Mr. Treebosser, seconded by Mr. Delapetro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. Delapetro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treebosser.
Here.
And Mr. Molnar.
Here. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you. For the 2022-23 school year, we opened the following bids on July 12, 2022, PSA Number 9100, exterior renovations at Woodbridge High School, and on July 19, 2022, PSA Number 9156, concrete and exterior renovations at Island Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Wolferman. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are required to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agenda items being presented this evening. When you come up to the microphone, please provide your name, the section of township where you reside, along with the specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Good evening. Todd Maris, Forge, New Jersey. With regard to the curriculum, point number 16, that the Board of Education approved the following supplemental books for instructional program. It lists, okay, ELA and the grades. Is such a list available for every school grade and every curriculum? That's my question.
Is that all your questions, Mr. Harris?
That's it. That's the only thing I want to have.
Dr. Massimino?
If we have outside supplemental materials, they have to be board-approved. I'm sure if you reach out to Mr. Passerino, he'd be happy to provide you with the list for whatever area you're looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else on the agendas? Thank you. Superintendent's agenda? Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations this evening?
Mr. President, I have eight items.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Treebosser. Do I get a second? Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Policy and planning, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the one item. I move the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Curriculum, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. The Curriculum Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following 17 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Treebosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Finance and insurance, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. The Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Technology, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. The Technology Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator, present the following two items. I move the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Transportation, Mr. Delapetro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Delapetro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Delapetro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, presents the following 26 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Delapetro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations to see?
None at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Seeing none, is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I have a number of items this evening. I promise I'll make them quick. First up, summer enrichment courses are taking place at the Woodbridge Township Recreation Department. It's Week Two. There are still slots available for your children to take advantage of these low-cost summer enrichment programs in the following areas: dance, art, music, robotics, biology, STEM, and American Sign Language, to name a few. Week Two is August the 15th through August the 19th. You could sign up for this program and see availability through the Township's website, Woodbridge Township's website, under the Recreation Department. That's www.twp.woodbridge nj.us. Check out that website. Perhaps, Dr. Massimino, would you mind kicking out an email to the district community reminding them of the summer enrichment courses?
No problem.
And many of those courses are taught by Woodbridge Township School District teachers. Nextly, and very quickly, every year, the school district puts together our guidance, well, excuse me, our guidance counselors and our central office administration puts together a list of colleges that our students have been accepted to, those who just graduated, as well as the students who are elected to enlist in our U.S. military. That publication was just finalized today. It's out on the school district website, and I kicked it off to TV 35 to get it up on their website, as well as the TV 36 bulletin. Congratulations to all their students, and good luck to the men and women who enlisted in the armed forces. Nextly, the administration want to thank you for putting out the annual school supply list. Parents, you may already be getting ready to send your children back to school. School district puts together a comprehensive school supply list that students by grade level will be needing. I will give a quick plug for the sales tax holiday that is new to the state of New Jersey. It's a 10-day sales tax holiday beginning August 27. It's a Saturday through Labor Day. Any school supplies, whether that's a computer, pens, pencils, notebooks, what have you, there is a sales tax holiday on that. I think that's a good thing for men and women, or excuse me, for families, if you're looking to save a few bucks, if you want to hold off on your back-to-school shopping until that time period. And I'm trying to think. I think that's, and you know what, last but not least, it's more of a federal issue. Federal government thus far has not yet elected to extend free school lunches to all students. Thus, parents, you'll be receiving notification from the district shortly that, you know, students who are not eligible for free or reduced lunch, that lunches will have to be paid for. Once again, that federal two-year, you know, COVID exemption, free lunches for all students that that has ended, it's beginning in September, please be prepared for that. And again, the district will be communicating that more eloquently. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other new business?
Mr. President?
Ms. Bourdain?
I just wanted to share that the Health Department will be having a COVID vaccine clinic from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Six months to 11 years old is August 2nd, 16th, and 30th. 12 years old and up is July 28th, August 11th, August 25th. Appointments are required, and, excuse me, they must be accompanied by an adult. The phone number 732-855-0600, extension 5004. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treebosser?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one more thing that Mr. Harris was talking about. It's really important now that the SSO, the Summer Feeding Program that enabled everybody to have a free meal, that parents fill out their free and reduced-price lunch applications as they are an integral part of our state aid reimbursement monies and DTRS transportation reimbursements as well. And also, the numbers have changed, and you may not have thought you were eligible in the past, and you are now. And our state legislators have so graciously funded an account to be able to pay the reduced amount, so if you qualify for reduced, because the cutoff is so close, you will be able to get a meal at no cost.
Yep. Thank you. Any other new business? We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation Number 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak.
Todd Maris, Forge, New Jersey. I'll try to be succinct and as articulate as I can be. Back in March, I believe, there was a child that was found to have had a gun and entered into JFK High School. I believe that Dr. Massimino did put out a notification to the parents of the JFK students explaining what the situation is or was at that point in time. Apparently, the child was going to be tried as an adult by the county prosecutor, but that was turned over by a judge who then imposed, I believe, a two-year probationary period for that child. I wish the school district had made that known to the entire community at that point in time, not just JFK, only for nothing else to quell any rumor possibilities, because a lot of people were very concerned in what happened. And I think, without making that particular child an example, certainly, the case itself should be brought out to, I think, the whole community and say, this will never be tolerated in Woodbridge, that this child was very fortunate that he was not tried as an adult, which would have ruined his entire life, maybe giving him two years or more in prison, and he's lucky to be on probation. I also hope that the school is following up with psychological counseling for that student as he continues to hopefully become a good citizen, get an education in our wonderful school system. I also want to speak, and perhaps my perception was wrong, at the last meeting, Dr. Massimino had some comments which seemed to allude to the fact that myself, or perhaps other people, he was not specific, may be asking questions of him or the staff that have some ill intent to them. I can assure you that for myself and the people that I know that came up and asked, I don't believe anybody has or is asking an invalid question or in any way means to demean anyone, Dr. Massimino, his staff, or the Board. We are simply asking questions, and as the constituents of the town, and if you look at your organization chart, we sit up on top and everybody else is below. So, we come to you in polite fashion, I believe, and ask you the questions that we're posing. And I thank you. For most instances, the responses have been positive and informative, and they may lead to other questions. The next thing I wanted to discuss was, I don't know if anybody caught it, but here it is, on Sunday, last Sunday's Home News Tribune, "Parents Push Back on Sex Education." And apparently, the Garwood School Board has said they have passed a resolution, not going to, they have actually passed a resolution telling the state they are not going to honor their mandates for the 21-22 school year in sex education curriculum. In fact, I'll quote one of the Board members, "If I have to explain to anyone why I am against that, then that person should never be around little children," said Salvador Pierulio, I believe his name is, Garwood School Board member and parent. He strongly supports resolution that will eventually be approved. Obviously, it's a much longer article, and I can't read through all of it, but I hope this Board will do the same thing. We can stand up to the state and its mandates and say, no, we're not doing it. And why shouldn't we? I think that gentleman made a very clear case. In fact, one of the ladies that spoke to it said, "Anyone pushing this material in schools is a sexual predator and should be in jail," a woman told the Board. She went on to say other things, one of which was wrong, but she said, "These predators are slipping topics like abortion, anal sex, masturbation, puberty blockers, inveto-fertilization, sexual identity, and gender identity into schools." She was wrong in the fact that they're not pushing or introducing puberty blockers. So, again, I hope you'll give that serious consideration, and perhaps this Board will step up and tell the state no. And there's been other articles that have come out indicating that the state is still undecided as to what punishment they'll give any school district that doesn't follow their mandates. Finally, I just wanted to speak very quickly. I'm going to run out of time, but I did do a calculation about the legal cost that apparently the school has encountered through my OPRA's, and that is just since May. And it came out to something like $4,684, $775, which were directly related to my OPA request regarding the school street, Ross Street, pardon me, Ross Street school sale of the property. You know, I see that, it's a shame that that much money has to be spent in legal reviews. And I have yet to even present this to my lawyers to see if we want to challenge any of it. I don't think it's necessary. I'm asking straightforward questions. I want to know if you're selling the school, if you have the information, and I get back a lot of legalese that says, this is all the reasons we don't have to give it to you. You may have a legal right, but is it right to do so? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Any comments back?
No, you didn't ask any questions. You made some statements, so the Board listened.
Just on the resolution.
The Board listened.
Well, Lund, hope Lund. Dr. Massimino has assured us publicly, and at least one parent I know privately, that the new curriculum, particularly around sex ed, would be age-appropriate, and the most outrageous elements would be moderated. You didn't say outrageous. I'm using that for myself, moderated. At the same time, Mr. Bush has let us know that we are living in a progressive, which he made clearly demean, ahead-of-the-curve state of New Jersey. I'd like to know how those two views, moderation and ahead-of-the-curve or progressive, are going to be reconciled in this Board. Alternately, I want to elaborate on something that occurred last time. Dr. Massimino, your predecessor took a man who was highly qualified to teach and supervise mathematics, a hard science that many people, many students struggle with, and moved him into the domain of social, emotional learning, specifically diversity, equity, and inclusion. And to my knowledge, that previous position of math supervisor is still unfilled. Parents around New Jersey have been concerned, as Mr. Harris mentioned, Toms River, Garwood, and quite a few more, Roxbury most recently, have been concerned with, have openly opposed DEI, which they see as a guise for pushing what has been termed a woke ideology that includes white shaming, black victimology, and pronoun enforcement. People in Woodbridge who have followed my past campaigns for office know that I seek to bring more accountability to local government. They've shared some of the same concerns with me. Last meeting, you deemed this line of questioning around these very real concerns as problematic. I want to know if you can elaborate as to why. Mr. Ali, do you agree with Robin DiAngelo, author of White Fragility, who writes, "The question is not did racism take place, but rather, how did racism manifest in this situation?" Is that a useful question for so and seeds of unity among students and in the community? And are you familiar, since you've brought up lens of history, with a gentleman named Howard Zinn and the resources that are still in play around his version of history? Mr. Bush, did you know Erin Maury, before she secured a contract as a psychologist for counseling and evaluating Woodbridge students? In what area of counseling is her expertise, if anyone can answer that? And anyone else? On the back of my T-shirt, it says abolish the Department of Education. I want to know if the Board agrees that that would be a good first step for taking back our schools and allowing local boards of ed who know their student and their learning community better than the federal and state government, allow them to work more freely and effectively with parents and students to achieve better outcomes in all subjects, especially the high-stakes subjects like math and reading and English.
All right. Where do I begin?
Actually, I have one more question now that I think about.
Dr. Massimino?
Is it too late? Is it too late?
Are you done with your questions?
Do I have time to ask one more?
Yeah.
Has research been done around the COVID vaccines, their efficacy, their risks around 18 and under, before we start promoting them among six-month and older? I hear there has been quite a bit of problems around cardiac tissue, reproductive tissue, and it's going largely unreported, but anyone who wants to know can find out more about that.
Are you done with your questions now?
I am indeed. Thank you.
As far as the vaccination, I've had two vaccinations and a booster, and I'm not dead yet, so I think it's pretty good for me.
That's a good scientific statement.
Dr. Massimino, do you want to?
So, I'll do my best to answer the questions that I could make sense of. SEL and DEI are two different things.
You're welcome.
Ms. Behr oversees social, emotional learning. That is different from diversity, equity, and inclusion, which Mr. Ali oversees. They're two separate things.
They're two separate things. And yes, we do have a math supervisor. We immediately appointed a supervisor after Mr. Ali vacated that position.
You're not exercising for him?
You're done, sir.
Mr. Lon, you had your chance.
Oh, that's right. It's not a dialogue.
No, it's not. You had five minutes. I explained the, and you sat down, so now you'll hear our answers.
Thank you.
You're done, Dr. Massimino? Mr. Ali?
I'm not sure you quite understand the intersectionality between mathematics and diversity, equity, and inclusion. So mathematics can be used to reveal disparities, and also looking to solve solutions and measure impact. So the support that I can provide, the school district, our principal, and other district principals, with that data analysis, because of my background in mathematics, is one of the things that makes me extremely qualified for the position, along with the other credentials, which I'm not sure people will know as many as others have done, but I am very qualified for the job. Does racism exist? Yes. Is it important to know how racism manifests itself in an educational setting? Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bush?
There's just one comment, I think, there was one comment where there was, I was asked about whether the particular employee, it was a school psychologist, was somebody that I know, and the answer is, "No, I don't." I don't know why I was asked that question. The other question, I do understand why it was addressed. I guess at one point, I described New Jersey as being a very progressive state. Unfortunately, in society today, I don't have to tell all of you that the term, you know, every term is viewed through a political lens, but this is not a political body, right? This is a nonpartisan Board of Education. The term progressive, as I used it, I think, a couple of months ago in this context, was described as a state that tends to be ahead of the curve. So the term progressive is not always viewed in terms of a left-wing progressive in the political context, but as I was using it, I was describing, for example, I think, you know, forgive me if it's not exactly what I meant, but I could say our state Supreme Court is viewed as a, has always been viewed, before the term progressive described, you know, an aspect of, let's say, left-wing ideology, as a progressive court, as a court that, along with some other very highly respected Supreme Courts, has crafted laws that end up becoming the law of other states in the years thereafter. So that's what I meant by the term progressive.
Mr. President? Mr. Harris?
I just wanted to expand on Mr. Bush's comments. I think you were using the word progressive lowercase p, right, as opposed to capital P. But I wanted to just, you know, for the public's benefit, Jonathan is, or Mr. Bush is our legal counsel on legal matters. He doesn't play a role in curriculum development. Would that be an accurate statement to say? So when we're talking about curriculum, health curriculum, or what have you, Mr. Bush does not have any role in that. That's left for our professionals in the curriculum office. So I just wanted to make that clear to the public, in case there was any confusion on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I guess the last one that kind of went to the board was the abolishment of the Department of Education, I think it was. That's probably a question that'll be debated on a candidate's night somewhere in the future. Mr. Muller?
I just wanted to touch base on one thing.
Yes.
I don't recall who said it, although it was Mr. Maris, is that they don't intend anything to be in a hurtful or harmful way, and if you're well-versed, which I believe you to be a bright and intelligent man, it doesn't matter what you think, it matters how it's perceived by those that you're saying it to. And quite honestly, I find some of the things that Mr. Lon and you have said are extremely hurtful and extremely cruel-hearted, and the way that you approach Mr. Ali, who is an absolute consummate professional, quite honestly, you should both be ashamed of yourself.
I'd like you to explain that further.
That's all I'm going to say to you.
Well, it's a snarky comment.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not going to have any dialogue between board members and members of the audience.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to ask questions, make comments?
John Vitaric Woodbridge. I'm going to make it short and clear. At the last meeting, I went through the insurance, and then I realized later on there was a insurance, student insurance policy. And I did, didn't have a chance to ask over here, but asked teachers that I know, asked people, "What is a student insurance policy? Does anybody could tell me that?" That's number one. I thought everybody's got insurance. But anyway, in order to, last meeting, Mr. Harris said that because of the DEI, there's a lot of, the question was, "Should we put cameras in the schools?" And I do believe that teachers probably object to it, which is their decision, and I expect that. But then he said something that we do have a problem recruiting new teachers. My question is, why? Also, the fire department's got the same problem, I understand. Police department's got the same problem. Even the state police got the same problem. And I don't know if you can answer that to me, why? Why do we have a problem by getting good people in all those so-called departments, from protection to education? Why is that? Why do we have a problem? I mean, we as citizens, you know, we have kids, grandchildren, or anybody else, they want to be teachers. They want to be, but why does Woodbridge have a problem to get those people, like I say, from firemen to police to the teachers? And if you can answer me, I don't expect to, whatever we can do, but tell me, why do we have a problem to recruit teachers?
Are they all your questions?
That's a question. That if you, and the next meeting, I will tell you what I think we have a problem. Thank you.
Okay. So the question of what is a student insurance policy? Mr. Wolferman?
Mr. Vitaric, a student insurance policy is for a student who would get hurt during the school day at school. They could file for that if it came to that. It's an option that they have. Mr. Vitaric, it's an extra safety net if they go through their first insurance first, their primary insurance first.
Mr. Bush, you want to answer the legal question about the cameras?
We do not put cameras in classrooms. There's questionable legality, and most specifically, it would result in an unachievable technological task of having to redact the voices, the images of children as they are student records. Let me be really clear. We do not put cameras in classrooms. We trust our teachers. We have an incredible teaching staff here. The board has a fabulous relationship with the teachers, with their principals, with their, with every, there's no reason for cameras in the classroom, and there's no legal reason or justification for doing so. It does feel like, I mean, it does feel like we have the same topics that come up at every single meeting, and I just, you know, Mr. President, obviously, the president's out tonight, but I would just, you know, submit that a lot of these questions, I think, have been asked and answered over the last three or four months.
No, well noted, well noted. But the public still has a right to ask their questions, and we'll sit here, we'll listen, we'll answer to the best of our ability. Are there any other comments from the public?
Mr. Muller? I just wanted to jump in real quick. There was a question from Mr. Vitar regarding, you know, why we're having trouble. I don't know if you read NJ.com with any frequency, I know I do. There's been a lot of publicity on statewide challenges with recruiting of new teachers, and you're absolutely right, cops, fire, troopers, what have you. That's why you see all those marquees on the turnpike at Parkway, asking men and women to enlist in the state police, and they're in their application window. What I've read in terms of the challenges attracting new teachers to the field, it's market forces. Right now, we have a 3.9% unemployment rate. There are a lot of jobs out there, you know, talented men and women who could go into education, or talented enough to take a job in just about any field that they choose from. Pay is very competitive here in Woodbridge Township. I'd probably say it's on the high side relative to other communities in Middlesex County. However, you know, they're, again, market forces. There's opportunities to make more money in other fields. Benefits are no longer what they used to be in prior decades. Teachers are paying more for benefits today. The pension is tier five, it's five tiers of pensioners in the state of New Jersey. The current tier for new employees, you're paying, what you pay in is effectively what you get out in your pension system, so it's no longer as attractive as the private sector. And additionally, from what I've read, I can't speak for, for, you know, I didn't join the teaching profession, and I can't speak for why an 18, 19, 20-year-old does not go to college to become a teacher any longer, or in less, lesser numbers, but I hear, you know, pressure to deliver. You're talking SGOs, you're talking a percentage of your, of your evaluation is determined based on student test scores. If it's higher at some point, I think it was 30%, I think it's down to five at this point, it may even be gone, and other, you know, mandates and pressures on teachers to serve, sometimes as effectively the police officer in the classroom, or the social worker, sometimes substituting, as some members on the board can allude to, it's almost the parent sometimes to children in their classroom. So it's a lot of pressure, it's not an easy job. You know, the public is sometimes a little over-demanding in terms of what we're looking for, you know? We have people proposing cameras to be in the classrooms now, you know? Let's, you know, there's probably a correlation between police officers wanting to become cops, and they say, "Wait a minute, I got a camera who's going to, that's on my chest now, that's going to watch and judge every single thing I say and do." And now comes along this idea that, again, I vehemently oppose of putting cameras in the classroom. That will only make the teaching profession less attractive and less desirable for people. You know, listen, we want freedom to do our jobs and not to be micromanaged and second-guessed and Monday morning quarterback, you know, all these different terms. You know, I hope, you know, the state of New Jersey does a better job. I work for the state. One of the things we're going to be doing is going to be doing a better job publicizing the value and the necessity of new teachers, and we're going to be promoting it through, actually, a public media campaign to get more young people to be interested and to pursue a career as educators. So hopefully, that works. I don't have all the, I don't have, I know some of the problems, I can't speak to them. Perhaps the members of the union, whether here today or in the future, want to address that. But I'd be, Mr. Vitaric, if you have any ideas on how we can make the teaching profession more attractive, whether here in Woodbridge or anywhere else in the state of New Jersey, please welcome those ideas.
Any other comments from the public?
Brian Jefroy, President WTA. First, on the cameras in the classroom. And I want to speak as a parent, although I live in another district, I would be adamantly opposed of public being able to view my child while they sit in their classroom. That there's a privacy issue, not to mention students with disabilities, students with 504s, which we have to protect their identity, but yet it would be able to be viewed by the public. So as a parent, I'm adamantly against. As a teacher, it makes the job more and more difficult. So why don't we, why is there problems getting teachers? Let's go back to the Christie administration, when teachers were the scapegoat for the financial problems of the state. Let's go back to taking away health benefits, taking away pension, being scrutinized for everything they do. That's what started it all, and all the other pressures that go along. But despite that, Woodbridge is able to find outstanding teachers. Woodbridge supports their teachers. So the issue is not a Woodbridge issue, the issue is a state issue, the issue is a federal issue. But I will be happy to say, in my role as the union president, the board, the administration has been able to work with the association. We're not always going to agree on issues, we're going to take our sides, but we're able to do that in a way which both sides can come to a productive conclusion. And I thank the board for working with us and making this, you know, a productive work environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? At this time, I'd like to thank everybody who came up to the microphone. Thank you for your questions, your comments, and your unique perspective on everything. The chair will recognize a motion to adjourn.
The motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?[1791.51]